I'd like to call this meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Chris?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice over all. First, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the Human Services Agenda this evening?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on our agenda is the time that's set aside for us to hear citizens that may wish to address the Human Services Committee about any items that might fall under that committee. Are there any citizens here tonight that wish to address us? Seeing none? Are there any updates?
None here.
Conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
I see no old business. Under new business, we have a Health Department tele-med grant for the Teen Health Center.
Make a motion to forward that to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other human services matters to come before this committee? For information only, we have the Health Department Points of Interest.
Make a motion, we need to file that?
Receive and file.
And make a motion to file that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to receive and file this packet.
So moved.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
We're adjourned.
We should enhance the 603, doesn't it?
Rocket meeting.
I've just set a new record.
It is.
We'll take our time with this one. Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Mr. McConnell?
Here. There is one addition that I know of. Item 7A, the 2018 Community Correction Plan Application is being removed from the agenda.
Make a motion, we put that at 7E for new business?
I think the motion is to delete. Turn your hearing aid up there, David.
Delete.
The motion is to delete that item this evening. So I'll move that item 7A, the Corrections Plan and Application be deleted from tonight's agenda.
I'll support that.
We have a motion to support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
We have motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to voice their great concern with anything we have going on this evening? Seeing none? Updates? Conceptual initiatives?
None here.
None.
We have no old business. Under new business, the Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement be sent on to the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support. This is a 50,000 unmatched grant, 86,000 additional, which is a 25 percent match by the county, and it's already been budgeted. So we're all set for that.
I think what is so disappointing, at least all of my years, I've come to really realize how valuable the Marine Division is to the safety of our community. And to see that in 2009, we got almost a quarter of a million dollars, and to see it down to 133,000, it's disappointing. It's going in the wrong direction when you're trying to provide safety in a community. And this is federally funded, and I just think more should be done.
They're being more fiscal with their money, Howard.
By pushing the cost on us.
It's got to start somewhere. I'm assuming this 136, with that, like last year was 133, we'd be at 136, the combined, the 50 and the 86, do you believe? Or are we down to 50?
50 federal and 86 state.
So that was the same last year, the combined, last year was 133, so we're ahead of last year's?
Yes, yep, a little bit.
Do we need, we don't need a roll call for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other judiciary and public safety matters at this time? Seeing none? Information only, receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
We have motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I see it took a little longer than Carl.
Yep.
I figured I could keep it going.
Pass the gamble, we can keep it rolling.
That's where it comes to screeching halt.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here. At this time, I would like a motion to add to our agenda as 7E, the Blue Water River Walks Storm Water Drainage Contract.
I'll make a motion to add.
Okay. Support. It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
You nailed it.
Motion carried. We now have an agenda. Any citizens to be heard?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard? Do we have any updates from commissioners? Any conceptual initiatives from administration?
No.
No old business. New business. The, uh... Charlie, did you want to do an update on?
No, we're here for new business.
You're here for new business? Okay. The Stocks Creek Drain District Letter of Credit, first item.
Chairman, I'd move this be sent to the full board.
Pardon? Support. I have a question. When I looked at this item a couple days ago, there was nothing there, and now today, I see there's something on the agenda that says flagged. Stock Creek Drain District Letters of Credit, but I don't see an item here.
Blank.
There should have been, I don't know, maybe it didn't convert.
Was it in our packet?
No, it might not have converted. But I will send it to you.
This is all I got.
Yeah, I don't have that.
That's all that shows up.
That's all that, yeah, it just shows letter of credit, it doesn't say.
There might have been a conversion error when it was added.
Okay.
Do you want an explanation of what we're doing here?
Yeah.
That would be good, before you send it on. So the Stocks Creek project is a drain district project that Commissioner Wiley is undertaking. It's been something that's been determined to be, the necessity's been determined, and there's been a lot of flooding as a result of this drain not having sufficient capacity. And wetlands are going to be impacted by the work that's going to be done. And the Drain Commissioner has to create mitigating wetlands at another location. So there's a first letter of credit to ensure that those wetlands at another location will be created. They've already been purchased for this project, approved by the DEQ, so it's really just a matter of getting them encumbered by a deed restriction and conservation easement that'll essentially do the trade-off. Then the second letter of credit is strictly to ensure that those wetlands will be maintained for their lifetime as the mitigation area for this project. And so the first one won't be around long, the other one will, but it'll save the taxpayers in that district from being assessed 60 grand to sit in this fund that they'll never be able to get back.
So what would you recommend that we do to proceed with this?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's necessary for the project, which is necessary to prevent flooding that's been occurring now for a couple, three years. I had a couple people call me wondering why I didn't get it moving along, and I said I wish I could, but I couldn't, I had no control over it. And Wiley has been working hard to get it done, it's just been, the permitting process has been difficult, but the DEQ came through and it's ready to go. And it cannot go without these letters of credit by the county. And there's no financial risk to the county.
Okay, so you're saying we need a motion to send this request for letters of credit on to the full board?
Yes.
I would entertain such a motion.
You already had the motion, in a second.
Oh. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. The landfill scale house improvements. Mr. Chairman, I would move that the landfill scale house improvements be sent on to the full board. Okay.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion regarding that? I would just point out that this project has been bid, and the low bidder is L. Simon's Construction Company in the amount of $23,565. Any other comments? All, we're moving this on to the full board.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Okay, now we're to the Conservation District Farm Bill Conservation Technical Proposal.
In your packet, you were received a funding proposal from us. You know, in the past three years, we've started down a partnership with the Santa Lake Conservation District to try to put the pieces back together down here, and we ended up partnering with Macomb County as well and had that farm bill technician position. Well, I guess the three years have kind of are coming to an end already, and we've tried to come each year to give you guys kind of a progress report. It's a pleasure to say, I think over $2.5 million has been garnered between St. Clair and Macomb Counties, land, you know, the farmers in those two particular counties, and different environmental programs. And I don't want to go into a lot of detail unless you want me to, but the packet did kind of lay out how many, like, there was like 5,000 acres of cover crops contracted, maybe 4,000 acres of nutrient management and so forth. Things that are designed to help, you know, better the waterways and reduce sediment in the local waterways. And also quite an economic impact as well. The true?
Structures that are created, like chemical storage structures and manure storage structures that generally use local contractors to do the work, so it's a ripple effect through the county.
Trickle down economics?
Well, trickle out economics.
But the reality is, that's all federal money through the US Farm Bill that's come through. And I know Christina could not do all that work herself, and actually, the demand continues to grow with it. So now we're trying to put this together again to go another three years. And as in the past, we asked for a reduced match because of the hardships in there, but we know kind of the tables have turned a little bit with some successes. So we had to up that match a little bit, so we thought that we would go back to our, you know, our partners, Macomb County and St. Clair County, and just trying to put an equal amount into another three years again. So our proposal was really for $10,000 a year, you know, for a total of $30,000 from the St. Clair County Commissioners on this proposal. It's been a wonderful program down here. It's really helped bring that office around again. We brought other grants in and actually had to hire another employee because of the amount of technical help that's needed between actually Santa Lake and St. Clair County. So that's created a job, and I think we're actually going to get another MEEP technician just solely for St. Clair County this fall. That's not been confirmed. So things are really moving along, and of course, our tree sale is growing down here as well. You would have received notification a couple months ago that the Santa Lake and the St. Clair Conservation District did do a legal merge together, and we've actually renamed it to the Blue Water Conservation District for marketing purposes and website design and so forth. Because there is thoughts of maybe we should consider becoming the Conservation District with Macomb County as well, since they've become such a good partner with us as well. And I didn't want to go through that whole redo, how do you build a website with three counties? So we just thought, let's go with Blue Water Conservation District, and that kind of touches on the heritage of the entire area, so. So that's where we're at with that. We are one board. The employees haven't changed in any sort, but it's really gotten down to, it's one administration and one board of directors that are elected through, the first board was appointed from the Michigan Department of Ag, but then from there, the Board of Directors would be elected from residents of St. Clair and Santa Lake Counties on our board. So if you guys have questions for us about our proposal, we'd be more than happy to go into more detail.
Any Commissioners with questions? David?
Just one question. What was the previous funding?
Previous?
You're asking for $10,000 a year now?
Oh, it was $5,000, yes. We, the Santa Lake CD pledged $5,000 a year, the Macomb Commissioners pledged $5,000, and the St. Clair, so now I've kind of doubled that. Our tree sales are doing well enough, there's different things that are doing well enough that we could...
Imagine, it's all fine. Are we the first county that you're asking for the $30,000?
No.
Have you got approval from the others?
Macomb County actually approved us two years ago for some other programs, but we do have their $10,000 committed.
Just asking, so we're in partnership with the neighbors?
Yep.
Any other comments by, or questions by Commissioners? Okay.
Make a motion, we send this on to the full board?
Full board?
Support.
I was just going to find out from administration if budgeting $10,000 would be well within what we could handle without any trouble?
Yeah.
This is such a vital thing for an agricultural community, and we have a lot of agricultural interest in this county to do, to provide that service. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Charlie. Joe?
Thank you.
The leach aid system modification?
Make a motion, we forward to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion or questions on that? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. The Blue Water River Walk Storm Water Drainage Contract. I see Mark here. We have any questions regarding that? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I have a question. Sure. Is this for final action tonight? Uh, Mark?
Okay. Thank you. I will move that we send the Blue Water River Storm Water Drainage Contract then on to the full board.
Okay.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. No discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Thank you. We have the Smiths Creek Landfill Report. I would entertain a motion to receive and file the landfill report.
So moved.
It's been moved and...
Support.
Supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to information only. We have the Park and Recreation Commission's financial documents in your packet for you to cruise over, and I would move that the information be received and filed.
So moved.
It's been moved and...
Support.
Supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. We have receive and file packets regarding environmental and public works?
Make a motion, we receive and file the packets?
Support.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. We've got number two, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. I see none. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives?
No.
None? We have no old business, so we're going to move to new business. 7A, contract approval request for waste management.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board?
Support.
I do have one question. I'm looking at the contract, and it's showing the value at $19,767. Does that mean that the previous contract was right near annual contract of $17,000? My understanding, because it was, waste management increased prices by $2,843 per year. So what was the contract prior, just under $17,000?
Yes.
Okay, just so I understood the figures correctly. Any other discussion? Yes?
I'm looking at the list that accompanies this. Am I to assume that each one of these different departments that has pickup services, their budget is charged for that service?
Um, some, yes, and some, we have centralized bills for locations, like maintenance's budget would be charged for this building, for the court building. Other locations, that might be specific to them, let's say, if it's a library location, would get charged to the library.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to 7B, Central Dispatch Foreign Replacement Foreign Act.
I'd move this be sent to the full board?
Have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving 7C, Employment Agreement with Greg Hill.
I would move that the extension of the employment agreement for Greg Hill for assessing services be sent on to the full board. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Carrie, is this, Greg only does LaPierre, he doesn't do anything else?
Correct. This extension would allow Mr. Hill to stay on to perform assessing services just for LaPierre County, but Justin Sears will move up to the county's Equalization Director once this existing contract expires.
And this is at LaPierre's request that Greg stay on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Helping out.
Credit correctly, Justin will be taking effect in August?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to 7D, Resolution 17-10, Intent to Establish a PACE Program.
So the request for you tonight is to establish a resolution of an intent to establish a PACE program in St. Clair County. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what the PACE program is. I know there was a workshop last month, and there was a few of you that weren't able to be at that workshop, so I just wanted to give you a quick synopsis of the program and how it works, how it benefits a property owner, as well as how it benefits the county. PACE is basically a long-term financing tool for property owners. Basically, we're talking about commercial or industrial property owners, also nonprofit organizations, to do energy efficiency upgrades at their properties. It stands for Property-Assessed Clean Energy, and there's actually a law here in Michigan that establishes this financing mechanism. The county can essentially establish a PACE district, which would allow property owners within that district to take advantage of this mechanism. What the property owner does is they voluntarily take on a special assessment on their property, and they basically pay this back through the property tax mechanism. They pay it off as part of its property tax bill. Because it is a special assessment, it actually becomes senior to any mortgage, so it becomes a very secure mechanism for lenders. They can finance up to 100 percent of the project costs under a PACE special assessment, and it can be amortized for up to 25 years. So essentially, the length of the payoff is not going to exceed what the useful life of what the project entails. The way that it benefits property owners, basically, there's no upfront cost for them, so they get immediate positive cash flow. In fact, that's part of the laws, that that has to be part of what's established in the agreement. So there's got to be immediate positive cash flow. They basically will save more than they pay as far as their energy bills from start to finish related to this project. And actually, for all projects that are $250,000 and up, there's actually, the contractors must guarantee that those savings will be in existence. So once that assessment is fully paid off, the property owner's going to continue to realize those savings, so it's definitely a win for the property owner. There's no cost to the county to create the PACE district, and the Lean and Green Michigan Organization that was here for the workshop presentation, they actually take care of all the administrative work that goes along with establishing the districts, so a lot of legal documentation and the agreement between the lenders and the property owners are all kind of shepherded through the process by Lean and Green Michigan. The other benefit to the county, obviously, is that these, you know, it's another tool in the toolbox to promote economic development for projects that are going to, you know, hopefully create jobs. Given the fact that it's promoting energy efficiency, it's obviously environmentally friendly as well. So at this point, you know, as I said, the resolution tonight is for final action, that's the intent to establish a PACE program. And then there is a PACE program document that establishes all of the parameters, all of the eligibility requirements, and I believe you might have a copy of that in front of you. But that essentially would be put out for review. The Board of Commissioners, you would hold a public hearing at your June 15 meeting to establish the district and pass a resolution following the public hearing. So that's a quick overview, but, uh, if there's any other questions, I can certainly answer them for you.
I have three. Does this have to be final action? We just received this, and I haven't had a chance to go through it.
That's not the final action item for tonight, tonight's final action would only be a resolution, um, with, it's basically a notice of intent to establish a district, so it's not doing the district itself.
I have another question that would be tied in that, out of our 31 municipalities, can any potential city or board here in Marysville opt out of our resolution?
Um, that, from my understanding, the, the district that would be established would cover the whole county, and so it's essentially, um, whether a, a participating, or a property owner that would be eligible, uh, would wanna participate with, uh, in the program through a lender. Um, I don't, I don't know why a, a community would necessarily opt out.
Yeah, the, the, uh, and I understand the opt-out or opt-in question, but in this case, they're not committing to anything. So the special assessment is either paid directly to the lender to repay the debt, or the county collects it. So there is no obligation, there's no administrative, and Carrie and I talked about that, and she's familiar with it. So there is no financial obligation, either the county or a township, there's no administrative obligation, there's no money committed, nothing, nothing impacts a local jurisdiction, other than a business or a property located there could benefit through energy assessment.
Could they opt out if they chose, if it's cheaper? Let's say Casco Township, like they did with the ATV, could a municipality opt out? And I think, been reviewing this, and the day after we had the special meeting, I got my statement from UBS, and I'm, I made a lot of money on PACE program, so I got a statement.
No, I, I guess that what, I, I don't think there's like an opt-in or an opt-out, 'cause it covers the whole county, but I think what they could say is if they did not want any PACE programs in their jurisdiction, they could pass a resolution, and if they pass that resolution, the Board of Commissioners, if you chose, could honor that request that they have no PACE programs in their jurisdiction.
And you know, my last question is, let's say a business got the loan, 'cause most businesses fail when they start up, after three, four years, it fails. There is no way to pay this special assessment back. Would that put a burden on anybody else that would wanna purchase that property? Would they be bound by the special assessment? Potentially, would that building be vacant because somebody doesn't wanna assume that debt?
Yes, the, uh, the assessment stays a tax lien on the property, and that's, if, if you, and I look hard at this, I made some calls about other places that have done it. If you, I think there's a lot of upside here, there's a, a lot of potential for economic development, but if there was a downside, um, the, if you had, I guess, if you, if you look at, if you do the energy efficiency, um, uh, project, then it theoretically should benefit that property and make it more valuable. But theoretically, it, you know, somebody could fail, it could be on the market, and somebody might say, I don't really care about having that, it, it isn't valued to me. So it could make a property, at least in theory, harder to sell. I think it's a stretch to get to where that would be the case, but it's certainly possible.
But we need to address it.
Yeah, it's, the point you raised is exactly what I thought about, same thing.
And on the flip side, I mean, potentially, a new property owner coming in, since it does run with the land, could, they would, they would immediately rec, uh, you know, benefit from those savings as well.
Right. But still, uh, as, if you're doing a business plan, you're gonna be looking at that.
Sure.
This is the cost of that particular property, if you have an identical piece of property next door where you don't have that, uh, not that it's a burden, it's supposed to be a benefit, but potential burden that you don't have the cash flow even though the initial person did.
Right.
No doubt, yeah, that's a good point.
Any other questions? We have, uh, no, we do not have a motion yet, can I have a motion to, oh, this is for final action for the resolution?
I would so move, this is for the resolution of the intent.
Correct.
Okay, I would so move.
Support.
Any further discussion? Uh, we don't need, there's no financial burdens, so just, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, moving on to other ways and means matters, do we have any? Seeing none, we'll move to information only. Seeing none?
I move that we receive and file packets.
Support.
Any discussion?